I'm going to call the order of the COVID town council meeting, six thirty Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Roll call please.
William Posner.
President.
Bill Gishen. Bill Ham.
Here.
Rich West. Valerie.
All of them. Saying for pledge please.
We are believed to be by the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I want to announce to everyone that this meeting is being recorded and you're giving your permission to be recorded. It will be show up later on our YouTube channel. Also at this time, if you would. People online, people in the room, please put your cell phones on mute. Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of November twenty-second and December sixth minutes, council minutes. We have all had a chance to read them. Are there any additions and deletions?
And make sure that we approve the minutes for November twenty-second and December sixth.
Second. Motion made. To approve the minutes for November twenty-second and December sixth, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same time, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the October and November statements. Approved or approved?
Second. Second.
Motion made the second to approve the financial reports for October and November twenty twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-two, date zero zero nine. The twenty twenty-three salary ordinance. Approved or approved?
Third.
Motion made the second to approve on second read salary ordinance for the ordinance twenty twenty-two, date zero zero nine, twenty twenty-three salary ordinance. All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved or approved on third read? Oh.
Yes.
So you want to hold it? You want to hold it? Okay. So all in favor, this was approved on second read. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two. Date zero one one rezoning of eighteen nine nine seven twenty-eight road from S one to PUD.
This came before the plan commission at their last meeting in November, so it's coming before you. Mr. Easterday submitted the application on behalf of the landowner for this application, so he's here in the audience. Basically, the plan commission, there's a letter of recommendation, it passed seven ayes to zero nays. Two of the plan commission members were absent. And I have forwarded on also the plan commission recommendation letter. So this ordinance basically cites the plan commission decision as well as their recommendation letter. Regarding this proposed PUD. This address is one eight nine nine seven twenty-eight road. It was zoned in S one and the proposed rezoning is to a PUD. The landowners are putting up three buildings on that property that will all have residences in them. However, this will not be a public commercial property of any type. It's for personal family usage as a large property. And I will let Mr. Easterday fill you in on presenting more details if you would like for him to present.
I counted this evening, folks, I counted you have twenty-five things on your agenda today. So therefore, I'm not going to bore you with. Here's a quick look of what has gone to the building commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
To the plan commission and then to you. We're basically asking you to approve the ordinance. I'm driving crazy.
No setback issues on any of that?
No, I think the hundred and fifty-seven bits are in your setback or something crazy.
I asked that just because.
I sent electronic copies of your entire files that I'm saying when I sent.
Anything else, Jim?
No. Now, I see you have questions.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. President?
No.
Okay. Is the body of water reflected here in the the site plan? Is the?
Yes. The body of water has been there for several years and in fact, the golf course is there. It has, after the cruise on the fairways, that was interesting, but yes, that's all there. And we're spending a lot of time with Indiana Department Environmental Management to get our drainage to go to that body of water, but to be filtered on the way, so everything's clean.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Russ. I have a question.
Go ahead, Russ.
I understand there's three residents on the property. What will happen five years from now when the owners sell that? Will the new owners be able to put up individual separate families? Or is there something in the covenant of the deed that will prevent that?
My answer is the PUD application and the recommendation is for a single-family residence.
Well, single-family residential can be interpreted a lot of different ways. You mean single ownership, right? You don't mean single-family residence because those are individual houses and single families could live in there. But it would have to stipulate that it would be single ownership forever and ever. Or a covenant written in like we did on that, like you did, Jim, on that property on the east shore.
Yeah, it's under one ownership and it will remain unless the PUD is modified.
What if they sell the property, Jim?
They have to be sold as a single, single resi- or single property in accordance with the PUD reform.
I don't see that anything is in there under the law that would ring a bell or anything that would prevent that from happening. All I'm saying is that's something the council needs to think about. Are there protections in there that in the future, people will not be able to put separate families in those three residents? That's all I'm saying.
Go ahead.
The PUD plan that was presented to everybody, including you, provides for it will be used in a single of like a, basically an S one type of planning and that's use. And so that use could not change without either modifying the PUD or subdividing or doing something.
Which would then have to go before.
Before everybody again.
Everybody changed.
Had to be start, start back over.
Exactly.
Correct.
But if one of the owners of one of these three houses sold it to somebody else, I mean, that's, there's no, no problem with that.
You want to own it for the whole fifty-six?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, Russ?
Thanks.
I think that.
I'm not on the council, but that's even worse, Jim Clevenger, if they sell one of the houses off to somebody else. Now you got separate families living on the same property. The only way you can protect this thing is by putting some kind of covenant into the deed that says that it should, can only be one ownership of the property in perpetual. Otherwise, it, like you said, Jim, they could sell it off and somebody else could move into one of the houses.
But they'd have to come back before that. Right now, it's one ownership.
You say they have to come back, but where's the stopgap? What's, what, what's going to notify the building commissioner or the BZA or anybody that something has changed? There's nothing, there's nothing that's going to trigger anything. When you got a deed covenant, then you got something that actually is in the law that says, hey, you can't do this. Just because there's a putt out there doesn't mean that it's going to trigger anything. They could, five years from now, they can sell off two of them or whatever, and you'll never get notified.
I respectfully disagree with you. I do not think you can do that. The county would never let you subdivide that property without going through a process.
Yeah, I agree.
Then, yeah, that's the attorney's opinion.
Yeah, that's what I agree too.
I agree. Counsel? Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one on first read?
Second.
Motion made the second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one one rezoning of eighteen nine nine seven twenty-eight road from S one to PUD on first read. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve, waive the rules for second, third read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one one, the rezoning of eighteen nine nine seven twenty-eight road from S one to PUD on second and third reading. Any other discussion?
Was that Bill Clevenger then Bill Ham?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is. Ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two. Additional appropriations for read. Everybody's got that in front of themselves or received it. Karen, do you want to go through it real quick?
Yeah, we just additional appropriations is a process you go through when you're finding yourself. Budget shortfall, we've had the money in our general fund to cover this, emergency services, salaries, thirty thousand dollars. The street department for equipment for twenty thousand dollars, just a point of explanation on the equipment. We purchased the dump truck early in the year, wanted to see if we could make it through the year with what we had, and we're not quite going to make it. Motor vehicle highway resurfacing fifty-three thousand two hundred forty and then equipment, one hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred forty-three. That the equipment was for the leaf machine that we purchased in the fall, which is still at this point well. I think we're going to get the leaves picked up in a good time. And local roads and streets for resurfacing sixteen thousand one fifty-four and finally community capital development for twenty. And again, each of these funds have that money in them. It's just a process that you have to go through where they're safe to.
Any questions for Karen?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one two for the additional appropriations.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve on first read. Ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two for additional appropriations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. What are your, what is your wishes?
We need to have a public hearing now.
Right, so that's what I thought. Next is a public hearing on that ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two for additional appropriations. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one two.
Second. Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two for additional appropriations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. There's been a sign up sheet that has been passed around and I, it's back to you now, so. Any public comments about the appropriations? Anyone on the lineup, public comments about the appropriations? During none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two for additional appropriations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve? Ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two for additional appropriations on second and third reading?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one two. On additional appropriations, second and third reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. Next is second, whoops, excuse me. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one three. Establishing opioid restricted fund, first reads. Karen, you want?
Yeah, so as you probably know, just state of Indiana was part of the mass settlement with opioid, with the several major companies. The Attorney General's Office has released how that money is being divided among different municipalities. It's over the year. We have to reset up a restricted fund, which is where you think the monies in that fund can only be used for certain purpose. With the, we didn't have to do this by ordinance, but I wanted to so that the fund was set at, unattached to that ordinance as exhibit, telling what we think specifically what they can be used for. And it's going to be over a period of time, so I'm recommending getting the fund set up and it's, isn't anything that we have to be in a hurry to set.
Yeah, the financial settlement is between CVS.
No, not this one. Oops, oh, this one isn't drug companies. This is between, oh, this is between Johnson and Johnson, Marisorsburg and Cardinal Health and McKesson. There is one coming for that, by the way, though.
Okay. It's kind of ahead of myself.
Yeah, you got it. You haven't got, did you get this money in, by the way? Yeah, you're supposed to get it by December nine. How much did you get? Yeah.
I've got some other things in mind.
Yeah, not, not much, but.
It's like four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember reading that, I have forty-three, forty-five, something.
Four thousand, the other one's nine.
Something like that.
Yeah, okay. You want me to read it or?
Well, no, I just, just wanted to make sure it's got the right settlement people.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so is there a motion to?
Question on the, on the ordinance. It states that only funds from the state treasurer. For this purpose can be deposited in that. Will there be any? Interest earning on that, do I get into that account and does that make a difference in terms of the wording of the ordinance?
I don't know that it makes a difference. It's just the main, the majority of that fund is.
Yes.
The only outside source is going to be that, I would assign interest.
She has to have a separate place to put it.
I understand that, but as far as if there are, and it may apply more to the second one than this one, but if there are donations to that account, in other words, it to memorialize a family member who may have had opioid problems and. Would we just need to make a special exception on those cases or do we want to move something in the ordinance itself?
If somebody's, one, if somebody's making his contribution, I would probably encourage them to make it elsewhere and not necessarily for us. Because they could go directly to. The police department or the EMS department and do it that way and then go through the gift fund that we can set up. The money came in, the money went out, and there's a good paper. I would rather go that way than kind of get.
It's simple this way, it's simple this way.
Fine, okay, all right. That answers my question, thank you.
So is there a motion to establish on first read ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one three establishing an opioid restricted fund?
Still moved, second.
Motion made and seconded to establish on first read ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one three establishing opioid restricted funds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close, same.
Motion to suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
The second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. You pass on second and third reading ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one three establishing opioid restricted fund. All of some favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries.
I may add, Mr. President, there's a whole group of these things and you guys may have a specific plan and that's great if you do, but if you don't. The, I think the county health department and there's some other folks in the county are working on programs for restricted use that would comply with the regs from the state. So you may find yourself tagging in for Culver on one of those programs that might get you a little farther bang for your dollar, just so you know.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is first reading for ordinance of twenty twenty-two days zero one four establishing opioid unrestricted fund.
The complete opposite of first one, it's non-restrictive because she's.
Either brand.
Ever, yes. But it does have to be appropriated and.
But it's, and it's only about a fourth of the bigger pot.
Right.
Actually fifteen percent, oh, fifteen of fifty, so thirty percent, thirty percent of it. Sorry.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero one four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move on first read ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one four establishing an opioid unrestricted fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign.
Motion to suspend rules for second, third read on ordinance. Two two dash zero one four.
Is there a second?
There.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On second and third read, suspend the rules and approve on second and third read ordinance twenty twenty-two days zero one four establishing an opioid unrestricted fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries.
I thought you were second.
Did I miss somebody?
No, 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 no.
Jim, for something from the unrestricted, could they, you know, contribute to a program like David's Courage? Do you want?
Anything.
Only programs dealing with addiction in the county?
If, if you're going to make a donation to David's Courage and that fits your program, I'd probably use the restricted funds because you want to make sure you use this. For opioid related.
This can be used.
Unrestricted.
With the unrestricted, yes.
I've been encouraging at county level to, you know, the fentanyl, the synthetic opioid, for them to develop some educational programs about the risk and dangers of that goofy thing.
Yeah.
So, but in answer to your, but you can use the unrestricted for any purpose.
Okay, moving on. Review the filing contract for twenty twenty-three. We'll take them individually or group them all together, Karen?
You probably want to go individually because I'm not sure that all of them are ready for you to approve.
Okay.
So the first one is.
Fire.
Is the North Bend Township Fire Department. There is no change, there are no changes to that one. It's twenty-five hundred dollars. We cover fire protection for them for the, I think, for two, that telephone number for death pre-bex. And I don't think you guys go over there all that much. But it's theirs, it's. Okay.
The law will.
So that one, there's no changes to that one, yes, you can go ahead.
Motion to approve the North Bend Township fire contract.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the North Bend Township fire contract, amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. Next is the business center.
On the business center, you might want to hold that one. I know Tracy's out, her father passed away, so. I don't know that there's any changes, but I haven't heard back from them. You could hold that one until next.
Hold that one, okay.
And then you are received a copy of the attorney contract.
Any questions about the attorney's contract?
No. Maybe last year.
Is there a motion to approve the attorney's contract for twenty twenty-three?
Still moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve our county attorney's contract for twenty-three, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, motion carries.
I, I know Greg is here representing MCEDC and I have a copy of the contract. As you guys know, we put some deliverables in the MCEDC contract last year. And rather than approve it, I know there's some things that MCEDC is going to do in the upcoming year that Greg has mentioned to me. So I was thinking we might want to modify some of those deliverables. I think Greg personally did a great job of meeting some of those deliverables, so I'm happy to recommend that we sign on with MCEDC again. But I think we could easily make some modifications. I know they're going to reintroduce the bear program again. And I think that's important because I think the last time we did those company interviews has been a few years back, pre-COVID, yeah.
And then three years before that.
Yeah, I think some of you may have sat in on those. I know when I was on the town council, I, I sat in on some of those and they were really. Good for us in terms of understanding the business needs and the challenges that our business face. Particularly some of the larger businesses like Culver Academy's, ACPI. So I think if you gave us till the first of the year, Greg and I could probably come back with a new set of deliverables. And if there's something in particular you want to see that maybe wasn't on it on last year's contract, reach out and let me know.
We did an addendum to that, that Greg, you're going to include.
Yeah, I've got both of them. I, and that's the thing, I think we just redid the addendum because that contract's been around a little while. And there, there are a few things there I think we'd want to keep. Like Greg's involvement with Crossroads Culver, the Business Development Committee have been really beneficial for us. In fact, I think we probably got more out of that than we even bargained for with some of the workshops that Greg has done with small business. Bureau and we've had good attendance at those as well, so. If there's something in particular that is not here that you want to add. And then I do think, one of the things we talked about in the past was the e hub. We reviewed the possibility of an e hub when the ready grant application came around. We didn't have anyone who wanted to make private investment in that. So we, we still have funds at MCEDC from regional cities. That got the two hundred thousand that we have and Plymouth has two hundred thousand as well. We just did not move forward with the ready application because we didn't have a, a project for it or private investment. So that might be something we want to think through, have a work session on if you'd like, but you know, let me know what your thoughts are on that. And other than that, we'll. Prepare it and bring it back in.
Bring it back in, Lynn.
I think last year we didn't sign this until probably close to the end of the first quarter, but I think we get it done a lot sooner this time.
Next thing on the agenda is the uh special memorandum of understanding.
I've been sharing with the most media periodically over the last month or so about just around the association of India. Um, and it's something where we we can register with them, it's a way of recouping unpaid utility bills as people skip out. Um, move out of town without, you know, we had votes a lot last month. Not sure if that would have gotten those or not, but um it's a way of kinda keeping track, um it would. If there's no cost to the town, so we would just, we have to upload a report, police on crimes. Um, but then we keep track of if someone is um found in the system, like maybe they get a tax return. Or something, it flags them, um and a letter sent to that person. They're given, um, I think it's thirty days notice to to let them know that their tax return will be hit or they can they can settle up. Um, or the demands and if they're, if they don't, it's taken off of their taxes. It was their tax recovery and then return to their town. But the the person that owes the money is also hit with a fee for all the costs.
But we don't get a B dot from the amount we would receive, the customer would pay you the.
There's no cost.
Extra fees, no cost.
So I know the town of Argus does it, um it's been very good for them. Um, a couple of other of my colleagues that I've talked with participated in it and they're they're pretty happy with it.
I moved it to the um kind of made approval of the documents of the special memorandum of understanding.
Their second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the special memorandum, the memorandum of understanding pending uh attorney's approval. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries. Now managers report.
All right, um my report does not go in the same order as our agenda, so as I cover it, I'll note what category we're in. Um, starting with the utility street department updates. Um, I sent you uh Bob, I think is online, yes, um two different peerless quotes, one is for a new mag meter. Uh, this would go at the code and the other one is to pull and repair a pump. The first one, I think that mag meter is pretty much need to be replaced for a while. And the total for that quote is seven thousand four hundred twenty. And then the quote, pull and repair the pump with peerless is thirty five hundred. Uh, Bob, do you wanna add any information about the quotes?
Uh, I don't know if they have any questions for me, basically, we test all the meters annually. And the Culver Co's failed the low flow test, so it needs to be replaced, it's too old to be rebuilt. And the service pump at the water plant, that has been slowly declining, they usually last five to seven years before they have to be pulled and inspected. And that one was put in in two thousand sixteen, so it's it's due.
Motion to approve the uh replacement of the mag meter in the amount of seventy four hundred and twenty dollars.
Salute.
Their second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve new six inch Siemens mag meter in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries. And do we have a motion to uh approve the new high service number two pump rebuild for thirty five hundred?
Don't move.
Their second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to uh approve the new high service number two pump rebuild for thirty five hundred dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, um, last week, the day before I left for Indianapolis for my sister's surgery, I met with Bill Ham and Jim Clevenger about surf. Contract, I'm working on putting updates in that to get back to them. I should have that back to both of you tomorrow. And then our plan is if Jim and Bill are good with the modifications, um we will send that back to surf. And if they've got suggested modifications they wanna make, we will take care of doing that before the next council meeting. Uh, and that's really all the further we are on that. Um, under Lake Max Phase Three, which is an N dot uh project. This is not a stellar project, this is the grant we won after we won stellar. Um, the only change I have for that is I met with the county commissioners and they have given us permission to work in the right of way. Um, Bob is gonna work with Jason to ensure that there aren't utilities or things we need to worry about in that right of way. Uh, and that's really the only change on that project, that one goes on. At the same time that Slate and Jefferson Trail go on and there's still environmental coordination going on between both of those projects. Um. Water project proposal for Midwestern, um this one is under, going to be underway. Uh, this is on the north end of town, we obviously can't get into construction anytime soon for that. Uh, but uh you guys approved that long ago. Uh, peerless proposal cleaning well, A, uh we can remove this probably from uh the town manager report. Uh, that worked out well for us and that we did not exceed that contracted amount to get that uh taken care of. I've left digester blower on the report for now because that's one of the many projects that we may look at um for future bonding purposes. Dance engineering proposal, many crossing grant, um as I notified you guys in email, we did win this grant for the Lake Shore Drive project in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand four hundred fifty six dollars and twenty five cents. Um, this requires a resolution. Um, as we did earlier in the year when we did the other community crossing grant, uh we have to authorize um our. Employee responsible with N dot to be able to sign off on contracts. So the resolution I drafted for you, um it's in the book, the same one we did earlier this year, it's just that today's date. And um it would authorize Bob to continue to be our um N dot that defines contracts.
For mention portion of that grant.
Um, it's, they cover seventy five percent of the total project cost, we cover twenty five percent, yeah.
That's digital signing, by the way, isn't it?
Yes.
I like, yeah.
They just changed over to duck.
That's why you gotta do all that.
Yeah. Um, and I believe that is resolution oh oh eight. Oh, is it oh oh five? Okay, that was way off. Um, so if you are ready to authorize Bob, I'll take a motion for that.
Don't move. Second.
Authorize Bob, move.
Okay. And it's approve the resolution.
Don't move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made the same to approve the resolution. Zero zero five. We authorize Bob to sign it, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries.
Uh, the next step that N dot will have us go through with that is we will notify bid process and that sort of thing. But we have to wait until this paperwork gets processed with N dot. They will also, um, we will have to sign a contract with them, so we'll be updating you as we go on that one. Uh, the Park Crossroads Stellar Project uh still underway. This is a stellar project from regional stellar. Um, and we are under construction right now on that project and nothing has changed other than the fact that it's getting cold outside. Um, emergency services will let the department heads do their updates with that. Under uh T M updates, the comprehensive uh plan, the current status on this. Um, as I let you guys know, we have uh seven different uh topic areas for now. After we did some of our initial public engagement, the survey, um the postcard activity, and then we did some stakeholder meetings. So now the Crossroads team is addressing seven topic areas um that have emerged out of all of that. And each one of those areas, we are writing um goals, strategies, priorities for. And so there's a member of the Crossroads team in charge of each of the seven areas. Some of you have probably been invited to those meetings, the first one we did was on business development. We've met with the merchant association group to go through those. Uh, we will also need meeting with uh redevelopment commission and the business development committee. Um, because all three of those uh stakeholder groups will want to have some input on that. Uh, utilities and infrastructure meeting will occur this Friday, Kevin Berger, I think yours is coming up. Are you quality of?
Oh, you placed tomorrow at um four thirty at the super junior's office.
Um, but once all of those group meetings have occurred with uh various stakeholder committees. We will then put together all of that data with MACOG and go back out for input on that. And pass that around so that if you see something missing or, you know, people wanna add to that, they certainly can. Um, but lots and lots of meetings going on with the comp plan right now and with MACOG has been attending those as well, facilitating um some of that work. Uh, merchant association meetings, um as I said, we just had them go over plan information, but in general, this group is a meeting to talk about downtown. Um, merchant issues and um we will continue to meet with them on a monthly basis, the next meeting for that is January ninth. Um, and in general, we have those at Cafe Max at nine AM on a usually the first Monday of the month in January, that's gonna fall on the ninth instead because of holiday. If you're interested in attending those, please feel free, um they've been very productive and and. Good meetings with merchants. Uh, no special event permits for this round. Um, you guys already approved the uh activity at the park for the uh water event. Um, ready grants, Dunes Project, uh we are status quo right now in this project. The South Bend Alcart Regional Partnership and R D A, as I've noted, we're working on uh getting a budget submitted for that. They then work with the state, um and those funds have to be allocated to where specifically you're spending the federal funds. Um, so, but on top of where you uh allocate ready funds, you also have to identify all the other expenses in that project, so. Uh, we have Collins working on his part of that. Um, and we will get that ready to submit to R D A. Um, and if you haven't met Taryn McFarlane and would like to let me know, she's been great basically calling all of these groups that have these funds. Um, annexation of Tamarack Road Property Housing Development.
Can I back that up one?
Uh huh.
Uh, I noticed you haven't here, you talked to Bill about the tip area, you say anything to him about the uh uh developmental agreement?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I probably should connect you and him on that, huh? I'm hope, maybe we could have a meeting like pre-holiday, if he's available. Are you available on the next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here and there.
Um, I'll let Jim report on the annexation, um. Let me make sure I have covered everything else, really it, other than the department head that'll come up.
Did you say anything about, you know, building commissioner or unsafe anything like that?
Um, well, we have a lot of permits still very active, we have three V Z A cases on Thursday and then we have four. Plan Commission uh next week, Jim is gonna attend that meeting, those are all rezoning hearings. Um, and uh we've, I I we're processing permits like daily, we had three T R C cases last week before I left. Lot of busy activity, a lot of people planning for spring and summer construction.
One thing I noticed driving around town today, uh on the uh. Side of the uh movie theater, there is a gutter at the top. And apparently the wind has separated the gutter and it's now partly up on the roof and. Flapping around a little bit, so I think that's something you probably need to contact somebody or, you know, Bob, you get out, we can get on there and just. Like, Bob took care of the fleishing on the front of the uh movie theater. To get that so it doesn't fall off and get somebody. You can see it pretty readily as you drive. Going east. Thank you.
Um, yeah, and I just wanted to thank you guys for your messages last week. Um, and for uh letting me take the time to be with my sister at a critical period of time. So appreciate all the text messaging and checking in and et cetera, so thanks.
Glad she's doing well.
Yeah.
Important. Department head reports. Jeff, are you on?
He should be, he was, he was planning on being on. He may actually still be in the building too, I'm not sure.
Oh.
See his name on.
Jerry?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of things for, uh, to bring up. This is just a card from the guys for you guys for serving us, helping us with our dinner.
Oh, thank you.
A few other objects that you might have noticed, our ladder truck's back, got it back in service last Thursday. Pulled that, it will be something that's a bill. We can then pass on to, you know, labs who are solving the damage to the truck, so. Should be seeing something in kinda like a car fact, so something that happened, at least it followed the truck, I would say. Um, in your uh mailboxes, there was a estimate for getting some uniforms for the guys. These are a class B uniform fitted and looked at class A and top B. So the jacket and hat. So when we do have a dress. Function to all. We go to the cemetery a couple times a year, we have a bunch of these guys, interesting, it's been six years. So what I'd like to is have you approve this uh this gear, this is just dress shirts, dress pants. And shoes, so everyone looks uniform when they're at those functions.
I didn't see anything in the box, but that's me.
It was about fifty seven hundred dollars?
Mm hmm. Hmm.
It was on email?
Should have been, there should have been one, so uh, yeah, I didn't see.
I saw something in email.
If it's not, it's just the, it, it just consists of uh two, two long sleeve, I believe, two short sleeve pair of pants, uh pair of socks, shoes.
He kind of.
Sure. Right.
Whatever, depending on what you are, work, uh, it's a look for sixteen or seventeen.
You all seen?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought we kept that up to you.
That's right.
Maybe you want to spam.
That that that's very possible.
Uh. I'd make a motion that we approve um purchase of the class B uniforms for the department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve the class B uniforms in the amount of five thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries.
Yes, I'd like to uh. Do that, like always, I'm pretty concerned with my budget, you know, spend money until we either have to at the end of the year or whatever, but we'd like to buy some more air bottles. And when we brought our airbags before, we bought them with one pack, one bottle extra. Now the fire scene, that can be like short, fast, you know, fast, I mean. Now the fire scene, that can be like short, you know, fast. I mean, it's supposed to be forty-five minutes. So what I'd like to do is buy five more bottles. Out of the budget this year, yeah, we're going to have to come to the money, I'm sure, because these won't be coming in until probably four months. At a price tag of, uh, seven thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and five cents.
Thanks for how many tanks?
When we bought them last year, they were like thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Now they're, they're already up to fourteen hundred dollars. And that would go with the fitted size of all the racks that we have.
I move that we approve the purchase of five tanks and the amount of, what was it, carrying seven thousand?
Seven thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars.
For second?
Second.
Most of the maiden said that we approved purchase of five tanks, uh, our department, the amount of seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Five cents. All those in favor, say aye. Close, same time, motion carried.
And the last thing, we had to let you know, officers, you will be seeing me for at least one whole year.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wayne. Art.
Nothing for me.
Nothing from her.
Move so quick. Bob, do you have anything else for utilities?
No, you've already covered mine. Thank you.
Thank you. First report.
Unfortunately, my report is about one of these all the other ordinances that you already passed during the meeting, but I'll try to pass. Um, last meeting you all, or four weeks ago, you all agreed about purchase of the machine. Um, however, we didn't get maintenance and it's up for you. I'd like to sign a maintenance contract for the applied innovations for fifty dollars a month or six hundred dollars per year. This covers, um, the, the toner, maintenance, anything. The only thing it doesn't cover is paper and stuff.
Motion to approve, uh. Purchase of, uh. Maintenance agreement for new copier.
Did you move?
No.
Oh, I moved. I'll say.
Motion made in second to approve maintenance contract for the new copier at fifty dollars a month. All those in favor, say aye. Close, same sign, okay.
I did receive back the seventeen eighty-two notice for the twenty twenty-three budget, so we are good there. Um, just waiting for the official notice, uh, from the, uh, the budget order and that'll, um, hit before the end of the year. Um, the last thing I also let you know that I was going to have a meeting with the Indian Office of Technology. About moving our website over to their platform. Um, I did it with a good meeting. The cost would be three thousand dollars per year, which is right now we're paying about three hundred dollars for hosting and that's it. There's no, no support, no nothing at all on us to program, upload, whatever. Um, the three thousand dollars would be the hosting, but also we could basically call them once a day for a ticket to do something to the website. Um, it would also be more secure. Um, you just have that extra, um. I guess, uh, resource of people to ask questions to. It, uh, one other thing that was, um, caught my attention, there are new regulations with the ADA. As far as making websites accessible, um, to many hearing impaired or visual impaired. And they, uh, have things in place to make sure that your, your websites meet those provisions as well. Um, and so I would like to, I, I would request that, uh, we move the website and pay. They also have a payment platform too, which offers better rates than what we currently have with our current, um, credit card company and some other. Advantages there. So my request would be to move the website and payment platform to the Indian Office of Technology. And allow me to take the appropriate steps to do so.
There a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to allow Karen to, uh, move the town's website to Indian Office of Technology and. Whatever it takes to get it done, to set it up correctly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close, same time, motion carries.
So I will ask you, do you all want input on the design, the contents, that sort of thing? Or do you trust me to get it done? And if you see anything that's missing, feel let me know.
That's a loaded question.
It's all on you.
Okay. I'm fine with that, just if somebody asks, I know that I've been given that blessing. I will be there for them. Um, okay. I, you, thank you for creating the tracks program and just find the click, um, you have.
Can I jump in on the tracks program?
Yeah.
She sent this to me ahead of time, so I looked it over and I don't have any problem with it. The motion was to approve, subject to my approval, if I recall.
Right.
The only thing is, this has been a place since twenty eighteen, the term started January twenty. Uh, it says twenty eighteen. And then.
That's what I got.
It does require, uh, that we name a coordinator in charge of this. So I'm assuming that you may want to name Karen in that position, since you trust her so well. And then there are a couple of to-dos that you have to follow through on, including the notice, but you, you do maybe want to, uh.
Do that tonight.
Designate her as the coordinator. You can do it later on, but. You can keep her, you can do it later on, but, oh, you're hot, I guess. That's, that would just be my thinking.
Their motion to authorize, uh, Karen to be, uh, keeper of tracks. For lack of a better. Motion made in second to authorize Karen to be the keeper of tracks program. All those in favor, say aye. Close, same sign, motion carries.
Hope you don't mind I jumped in there on that one for you.
No, I appreciate.
And, and.
And I can, I can move ahead.
And, and with that, I mean, Jim stalks, he's already given his blessing and on the.
Yeah.
So. Next.
Okay, so the final thing I have is just a reminder that there are board and commission openings. I will look through all of them. They're all on the website. Um, they're just asking the applications be submitted later than four o'clock on December thirtieth. After that, we're all. Um, then finally, I gave you all anti-nepotism and contracting certification. So if you could fill those out, you can sign them tonight. Um, but we'll go ahead and present them to. President Council to be accepted at the next meeting.
Claims over twenty-five.
Claims over twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
No, you didn't. And I thought I had this all in the minutes so that I could just go through and they disappeared on me, so I'm.
Thing we read, we read what you.
I. Take those comments. So there are three, uh, claims for your approval. Oliver Ford, two thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. That was for one of the squad cars that needed to be repaired. Central Square Technologies, two thousand seven eighty-seven eighty-eight, and that's for software subscription for the police department. And finally, Travelers R and D, two thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars, and that's for, um, the audit on the workman's comp.
Their motion to prove things over twenty-five hundreds? For second? Most of the maiden seconded with proof things over twenty-five hundred. All those in favor, say aye.
And my last thing is, where we can have out, but Merry Christmas.
What was that?
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. So.
And don't forget the party.
Friday.
Be late.
But I mean, I guess, just so that people know, we are having an employee Christmas party on Friday night with the code. And the council will be there and. But we've gotten accomplished this year and just have some time and fellowship and enjoy.
Thirties report.
Okay, uh, we took care of that tracks program thing. Um, uh, Beachview Annexation. Um, I think I circulated a memo, I, I'm not sure to everybody, but. Um, uh, we are expecting to receive a petition from the owners for the Beachview Properties to annex. Beachview into the town. That's property way down south. Um, there, under the rules, uh, there's timing issues that have to be accomplished. Uh, you get the notice ready to go, so when it's filed, uh, we're supposed to have a public hearing within thirty days of the petition. So, uh, we're planning on a public hearing at your January tenth meeting. Uh, you don't have to act on the annexation at that time, but that's when we'll have the public hearing. I think you have a hundred and fifty days after the petition. Uh, and your town manager is already working on a fiscal plan that is part of all of that. And, uh, so we'll try to have all of that, uh, for you to some degree ahead of even the. Uh, public hearings, so you maybe have a chance to review some of those things, uh, uh, on January tenth. Uh, if you have questions about any of that, uh, feel free to let me know, but that's the, uh, the plan is a development of a. Uh, RV boat storage facility of some magnitude down there. Um, and then, um. The attorney fee agreement, I'll get Jeanette to sign and get that back to you guys, so you may not sign that agreement today. And the other thing is, is, uh, you'll be better represented at the last meeting of the month, December twenty-seventh. Because I'm going to be out of town and I'm sending my colleague, Ms. Sarisi. And so be on your best behavior or she'll whip you into shape, so. And that's all I have, Mr. President. We are. Uh, and I'm not quite sure the timing on that, but.
Yeah, it'll probably coincide with the other properties and that. They'll do it all at one time.
The fiscal plan's a little, you know, we were to have extended sewer and water down to the Howard property. Which is just north there, but we never got that far, so part of that is going to be, uh. Dealing with, with that matter, so. That's all I have.
Next is utility shut-off ordinance violation. At this time, those present to, uh. Dispute utility shut-off or an ordinance violation may address the council. Is anyone present? Do so. Karen, you're seeing none, going to move on to citizen input, input. At this time, the public may address the council with their concerns. Although the public may speak on any item that is not included on the agenda. As in a public hearing, the council may or may not respond or discuss the issue brought forward at this time. So I open it up. Let me open it up first, uh, online for citizen input. Is there anyone online? If so, please state your name.
Michaela, um, I'm here to, good evening, um, I'm, I have few remarks may, uh, to make regarding the.
Michaela, state your full name and address, please.
Yeah, it's, uh, Michaela Hardy, seven five three one Pine Trail Court, uh, Culver, Indiana.
Thank you.
So I have a few remarks to make regarding the town's farmers market. Since the start of the COVID nineteen pandemics, uh, systematic changes continue to be introduced in order to mitigate the gaps. In emergency preparedness, infrastructure and any barriers for members and communities across the nation. Um, with that, I believe our community should take advantage of all opportunities offered by the federal and or state governments. In order to be with those already ahead of the curve, such as Plymouth. Yes, they're a larger municipal, but with our tour, tourism and proximity to neighboring towns. We can continue to offer more for our permanent residents. Farmers markets have hidden benefits for the communities they serve. The Hoosier Farmers Market Association estimates that twenty-two cents of each dollar spent at big box grocers stay in the local economy. While sixty-seven cents of every dollar spent at farmers markets remain local. Um, Plymouth's Farmers Market and Culvers both authorize WIC and, um. FM NP and SFM NP redemption options. However, there's the additional option with SNAP purchasing, um, for Plymouth. That I believe, uh, is different from Culvers. Um, for the four point, four point five percent issued SNAP benefits for our zip codes population. The SNAP purchasing option could make a difference by providing more variety when selecting fresh and nutritious foods. But the town inventors could benefit more. Um, economists estimate that every dollar a household redeems through SNAP generates about a dollar seventy in economic activity. Uh, if it's not something that's already being considered or implemented. I believe would be of great interest to the community due to the prospective economic benefits. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Michaela, I will, um, pass your, um, comments on to the farmers market folks who sort of run that. It's, it's not run through the town, although they often use town property at the park, et cetera. Um, so I'll make sure, um, that they get your input. I, I think it's great input, by the way.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Michaela. Any other citizen input from, uh, anyone online? Karen, none? Any citizen input in the room?
Uh, I'm Emily King. I live on West Shore Circle. And I was wondering, um, Jim, when you spoke about the RV storage, is that the property that's to the south of the cemetery?
Yes.
And, and they. They're wanting to annex it to the town?
Yes.
For what reason?
They want it to be in the town, hook up with water and sewer.
And who owns that property?
Beachview Properties LLC is the title owner.
Any other citizen input? Terry?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to earlier, uh, you guys, uh, voted on some property on twenty-eight road where they have the gravel pitting upon. I've had a pretty extensive background on that. We, you know, engineers from the owners. And builder on fire suppression and the way they wanted to handle their buildings and how they, you know, how. How they were going to work because it's so far away and. You know, the farther you go out, your insurance rates are as high as ever, so we did, we met probably three times, like the. Residential hall sprinkled, which is pretty rare, it's pretty expensive to do, but they did that for the wrong reason. I tried to get them for the hydrant force, that didn't happen. But that could help a lot of people in the area. I've been pushing them. They want a dry hydrant and I steered them away from it and we've had such bad luck with them in years, so. We actively have none in our whole community township, you know, just all. With the zebra muscles, I don't want to take to keep them clean. It, it was just terrible. It was tearing up our homes, so it was just bad, so. So why don't you get a little information on that property also, so all the buildings that are going to be there are going to be sprinkled.
Thanks, Terry. Any other citizen input? Moving on to council issues.
Rich? Um, I don't have anything except to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season of the year. Back here, I guess, before the year, so let's phone that one.
Bill? Same, happy holidays to everybody.
I could sound like broken record. Wish everyone a happy, have Chris, Merry Christmas and. Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Bill?
I have nothing. Except for happy holidays.
I do. I want, I wanna talk a little bit about next year's budget and things we've got in the budget, but not online items, and has to do with blue zones. I personally am against blue zones, I don't see the benefit of it, uh. I know we have twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget next year, uh, somewhere, so I'm told that we can fund the first of our seventy-five thousand dollars that we've talked about over the next three years for blue zones. But I think we can spend that, as you can tell from the appropriations, we got some budget constraints and problems. Uh, the appropriations, I think that twenty-five thousand dollars can be better spent next year for salaries for our employees. Uh, our employee retention is virtually job number one and the top of my list. So next year, that in mid-year, if we have the ability to give some mid-year increases in certain departments for certain people, I would use that twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for that purpose. So I would ask for a motion from the council to, uh, basically rescind or not, when the ready grant comes out, I'd write our twenty-five thousand dollar check uh, for next year, and then the subsequent years will do the same, because I just can't see spending that money for administrative costs. And three years down the road, uh, there are no deliverables in the interim. That's gonna come back to us, and then we're gonna have to implement stuff, but we don't know what blue zones is gonna be like, so if there are any kind of motion or discussion that we wanna have about that.
I know there's been a lot of talk about blue zones and. Hate to see us give up on a good program before we even started.
We don't know what the program is, that's the problem. We don't know what's gonna be coming down the pipe. And that's, you know, we're putting money out and betting on the come, and we got better uses for our monies. That's where I'm at.
Well, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the front-end load of the administrative costs of the program. Um, I think it's, uh, it's a lot of money, and I think that we can use our portion of our twenty-five thousand, uh, better to benefit our employees.
I agree with the bill on that. For nothing to be there except for just welfare and health, um, and nothing behind it, it just seems, seems like we're committing to something that's, uh, air.
People are gonna do what they wanna do to, you know, protect their health. Is there any kind of motion to not fund that twenty-five thousand?
No move.
Second.
Motion made in seconded not to admit the twenty-five thousand dollars next year to blue zones, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries, motion carries, root two. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Yeah. Happy New Year and thank you for coming. Welcome to a journey.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For journey.